Right now that shows a 4% increase in the levy to the taxpayer. And one of the reasons it's four and not three is that there's approximately 1% in there that we've added in response to the financial policies that council approved in '07. It's specifically related to the reserves, and it's an effort to really attempt to rebuild the reserves and begin making an annual contribution back into the reserves. Because as you know, over the last many years, we've been taking from reserves, which is what they're for, to help stabilize the levy. It was sort of mentioned a little earlier tonight, the whole non-assessment. This is, of course, a non-assessment year, and it won't be till '09 when properties are reassessed. And I don't want people to get the idea that when you are assessed, suddenly the taxes go up proportionally to the assessment. Not only do our provinces have some control of that, but the approach we've taken over the last many years is not so much the assessment, but where our costs are. And we've adjusted the mill rate accordingly, or the tax rate accordingly. And we focus on the levy, not so much just the assessment. But obviously, having no change in the assessment is an issue. However, what we do have is approximately $1 million, just under $1 million more this year because of new assessment coming on street. So that's very helpful to us. The 1% I mentioned regarding financial policies, and you can keep this in mind, when you look at the levies and the 4% we're talking about, 1% equals approximately $440,000. You recall, last year, we were talking about a number of about $400,000. So the actual mill rate increase is equivalent to about $1.3 million, and about 440 for the other point. OLG, see, is mentioned in there because, as you know, we have a fairly significant issue we're dealing with relative to a tax appeal for reassessment from OLG. And the assessment actually goes back to '04. So there's a retroactivity issue of '04, '05, '06, and now, of course, '07, and it's dealing with both properties. In anticipation of that possibly getting resolved, we've had to allocate a certain amount of money in the budget to deal with that in case we end up having to pay as a result of it. That's fairly significant, and we have approximately $850,000 in the budget as a cost to us or loss to us because of that pending issue. The other thing we have in there in terms of animal control because of the issues we've been dealing with are looking at how we provide the services going forward, and we have indicated an additional amount of approximately $250,000 to deal with that issue, pending council's direction when we consider the various alternatives that we're going to deal with a bit later. This is the budget with transit included, and it shows an increase of over $11 million, which reflects about a 14% increase. And that, of course, is not a good reflection of our increased expenditures. Normally, we only have the net amount in the transit budget. So when you look at your numbers, I hope people didn't get scared off just because of the sheer size of that. The next slide actually gives us a little bit of a breakdown relative to the impact of transit. So as you can see here, the total expenditures for transit alone are $7.6 million, and the revenue at $4.5 million. So if we take those out, it makes a huge impact in terms of the other numbers you saw. Normally, we would only show the amount, the difference, that we would have an ad budget to give to transit, which was about $2.7 million. So that's why our numbers look pretty high, and it looks like a 14% increase in expenditures. That's not the case at all. Next slide is getting into the specifics of the revenues and some of the larger numbers here that we're dealing with. And the big one at the top of the revenue is the $2.7 that we mentioned, $2.7 million, which is the 3% on the levy, the 1% for the transfers to reserves, and then, of course, the overall growth is about $1 million. So it says 6.5%, but what you're really talking about, and I know that's your concern, the increase of taxpayers on the levy, it's really a 4% that we're really dealing with. If we look down the line, I'm not going to go through these line by line here, but if you look at the line for other revenues as well, which is on the positive side of things, there's an amount of down the bottom there of about $407,000. And that's because this year, we kick in with the going from $2.4, $2.6, $2.6 to $3 million with the OLG after 10 years. Remember, the agreement was that we start collecting $3 million. This is the year that it has an impact on us. So in the area of transfers from reserves at the bottom there, that $2.1, a lot of the items I just mentioned are included in there, including, we estimate, the surplus. We have a higher-than-normal surplus this year, an additional of about $800,000. There's also an amount in there of about $400,000 we benefited from because, related to our various health benefits and so on, and we've had a very good record with costs within that area over the last couple of years, and we built up a bit of a surplus, and we've been able to take in approximately $400,000 into this account because of that record. The other thing is, too, we're anticipating increases in the gas tax, both on the provincial side and the federal side, that really helped us out this year. And on the federal side, we're talking over $800,000, about $826,000 on the federal side, that's an incremental change, and about $454,000 on the provincial side. So that's pretty significant for us. On the expenditure side, we're dealing with, again, the biggest item there is the one on the top line, salaries and wages, and we've got approximately $1.8 million of that is for the settlements that I referred to a bit earlier. Another fairly large amount of that, and Lee may chat about that later, because we've hired a large number of new firefighters over the last few years, they slowly move through the system, and that has an impact as they move up to a first-class firefighter. And there's a cost this year alone of about $250,000 just for that particular part of it. So that's pretty significant, as well as other incremental changes throughout that area. In the area of the materials, we're only up, actually, was it, oh, $2.3? And I just want to point that out because we've done that through other efficiencies in other areas, because if you look at our fuel cost alone, it's up 15%, and we know that gas and hydro and so on are up more in the 6, 7 range, depending on uses. So we're comfortable with that kind of an increase. The contract services, joint 4.9, that's really where we've had the animal control cost. We also have about $440,000 in that amount dealing with ditch and culvert improvements. So that's an increase in that area because of the concerns expressed by council over the last little while. So I mean, that's sort of a bigger picture. So you're looking at a 7.5% increase in expenditures, which is significant, but as you can see, it's mostly in those key areas that I've pointed out. On the next slide, again, just to summarize what the impact of this is, what you have in front of you tonight, is with a 4% increase, you're talking a change in the municipal sector that we can control of $32.42. So that's really the overall impact of what we're really dealing with. So what we'd like to do now, Chairman, is really ask the individual directors to come up and give a quick summary of their area, and of course, we'll be happy to answer any questions at all that we can. And if we can't, we'll make sure we get the data back to you prior to the next meeting. So Jeff Holman will deal with the public works side of it.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, Peter Angelo, and members of committee. The municipal works operating budget is... Yeah, sorry, Mr. Holman, I think I have a question of Mr. McDonald before you start.
First of all, I enjoyed the presentation. I think it was very helpful. The 32-point, 32-something increase in taxes, that's what for an average assessment of...
Yeah, we use the number of, I think it's $158,000 or $59,000, $159,000. That's sort of our median range in Niagara Falls. So that's what that's based on. And we've tried to be consistent the last few years to use one in that area.
What percentage is that? 4%? Is that the 4%?
That's exactly what we got, 4%. So if you live in a house, it's still be dealing with a 4% increase on your levy, but that 32 could be higher or lower depending on where you live.
And the industrial, commercial increases, again, at this point, 4%?
Yeah, they vary a little bit, but in terms of the overall impact, we're in that same range. Todd, probably, is the chair explaining?
Yes, we just changed the tax rate, so it would be 4% for the other classes. The only way that that would change is, as you know, the region establishes tax policy. So if the ratios were to be changed at the region, that may have an impact either positively or negatively on the other classes. So at this point, the 4% would be the same across the board for all classes.
So just to put everything in perspective, if you got a $150,000 house, which there's probably some in the community, I think the average place now is $254,000 for new housing, or something in that neighborhood, I heard that figure. So if you're talking about a hotel that's worth $60 million, the increased taxes would still be 4%. Is that right?
Correct. Remember that with the commercial class and industrial class, there are different legislations. The capping rules apply, and so it depends, once again. In general, that's true, 4%. However, it depends on those properties, where they are in the capping category, and that would be the impact that they would, they may face, a larger rate increase because they've been protected in the previous years. But the reason that the $159 is used, that's a number that Impact has provided to us, which is a number that is the average median assessment. Remember that that is based on the 2003 tax year, because that was the assessment year that we used, or that's the year that was used for the last assessment, and then it'll be 2009. That'll be the new assessment.
I just want to put everything in perspective here. We're going to say $32, that's for a basic home, $159,000. Everybody else is affected, and we're not finished yet. The 4% doesn't really mean anything.
Just to further clarify that, Councilor Thompson, it's an assessment at $158, but you're quite right, likely that house would be selling for $200,000 on the market, so because of the years back. So when people think about this, they shouldn't be thinking their house is worth $159. That's the assessment, which we all know the homes are selling for much more than that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of committee. The municipal works budget has been drafted to respond to some of the key issues and decisions that were made by council and input that we've received over the past year. Now, you'll see that the gross amount is about $28.6 million, which represents just over $1.6 million increase over last year's budget figures, or 5.8%. The largest increase, of course, comes under the section of roadways, excuse me, which includes paved roads, unpaved road sidewalks, drainage, and some of the other roadside maintenance activities. The largest component of that, of course, is on paved roads side, and it's, we're proposing a sizable increase there, as we get into it. Winter control is reflective of the decision you made tonight with respect to sidewalk maintenance. Street lighting includes the cost of lighting and power charges as well. The other areas, fleet and facilities and environmental are services that we have, basically are adjustments of rental rates and purchase of materials and those types of services. Environmental includes costs for recycling and our payments to the region. Okay, the largest increases on the roadside are as a result of our intention to spend some sizable dollars on our capital works program, particularly road rehabilitation, going to be allocated somewhere in the neighborhood of $4 million towards various activities such as asphalt, overlay, road rehabilitation, bridge and culvert inspections. The other sizable increase is a result of our decision to fund municipal drain projects, the portion that we would have otherwise assessed against individual property owners. And that will include the work on the Hunter Drain, Warriors Creek, and the Union Marsh Drain. The other increases and decreases are actually reflective of either marginal increases as a result of inflation or some refinements that we've done to rental rates. And we will continue to use best management practices to try and refine some of our costing, better record-keeping, and things like that will help us produce even more accurate numbers as we move along. Our objectives, priorities for 2008 will include trying to position ourselves, to put ourselves in compliance for PSAB, which has to be in place by January 1st, 2009. We'll be looking for other sources of funding through our development charges background study in preparation for our new bylaw, which has to be in place by July of 2009. We're going to be, just on that point, Councilor Thompson.
I've been around a long time, but I don't know what PSAB is. Probably some people watching tonight that don't know what it is.
Sorry, at PSAB, since for Public Sector Accounting Board, there were new regulations passed which will be forcing us to report our assets, capital assets, in a different manner, which means we have to update our inventories, we have to apply a lifecycle cost to these assets, and includes all the pipes in the ground, the conditions of the road, all our facilities. We'll be putting considerable effort into our weeping tile disconnection program to reduce the amount of extraneous flows into our system, and that, those are initiatives that came out of our Calerode Pump Station EA and our push control plant. Going to continue aggressively with our service delivery review of water and wastewater services. We'll be, we have a very aggressive capital works program. You've probably got your, we'll be getting your binders tonight, and so you'll see that there's considerable amount of work we've done on the project management side. We're going to be focusing quite a bit on structures, particularly Waitman Bridge, and some of the structures that need to be revisited to make sure that they're in compliance with the bridge code. And also, it will include engineering for the rail grade separation project that we discussed recently. We'll be focusing on compliance with the regulations for drinking water quality. Councilor Aiononi is going to be helping us with that process to review the gaps between what we say we do and what we actually do, and to develop an operational plan and a financial plan that will help us over the next number of years. And then internally, we'll be looking at some issues that keep coming up, particularly problems with municipal road allowances, contracts, agreements with utility companies for dealing with restoration, how we deal with actually taking road widens, does it involve removal of signs, and all those types of issues. We'd like to hammer those details out. We'd like to bring our Development Standards Manual up to par with what's happening in other municipalities across the region, and we'd like to focus in on some more strict policies dealing with lot clearing. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Any questions of Mr. Holman? Mary Soski and Caffettering, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to commend Mr. Holman. I think he encapsulates very well the priorities that this council established with respect to municipal works, and I know it's a challenge, that obviously, we're trying to deal with affordable increases, Mr. Chair, and I appreciate that point, but obviously, there is a clamor, as you know, and we all received a lot of calls recently regarding the condition of our roads, which we're going to be doing a lot of mill work, milling next year, and repairing the surfaces. So I just think that the encapsulation of the priorities that we have set for staff, at least as far as municipal works, have been addressed in this program that Mr. Holman presents to us.
You're quite correct. Councilor Wing?
Thank you. Municipal works and fire services are the two areas I think we can never throw enough money at. I was really happy to see the weeping tile disconnection program in there. I know that's going to help with our flooding problems. I'm wondering, the storm sewer transfers to capital, $500,000 removed from the draft budget, what was that $500,000 earmarked for?
Mr. Chairman, initially, we wanted to spend close to $1 million to beef up the maintenance on our storm systems. I know that we've spent and are, continue to spend more money on our sanitary sewer systems, but we recognize that if the catch basins aren't cleaned out, then the storm systems don't work, which causes problems for our sanitary sewer system. And historically, we have kind of gone up and down on our expenditures for storm sewers. So I think the initial proposal was to spend a million. We had to cut it off at half a million, and that represents about $165,000 increase from last year's budget.
Okay, cutting this half million, is that going to mean potentially more flooding problems?
Well, of course, I'm always looking for more resources to do more work, but I think we're comfortable knowing that, first of all, we recognize that there is a problem, and that eventually, if we can get back up to around a million dollars a year for our storm sewers, that we'll be able to stay on top of it. We're playing a little bit of catch-up now, but comfortable knowing that with the resources that we have available to us, that we'll be able to get a good jump on where we need to be in the next couple of years.
Yeah, I may want to see that put back in. My other question is regards to the roads. I'm wondering, you know, I noticed there was the cut and transfer to capital. In terms of what we're planning to do in operating and in terms of transfers to capital for roadworks, what is being, you know, in terms of what's being planned for 2008, what will be the impact on the proportion of our roads that are in fair or poor condition? Are we going to see an improvement in the status of our roadways? Are we just treading water?
I'm trying to think back of the exact numbers that were presented to you earlier last year, but as I recall, we would have had to spend way more money than we could afford in order to get caught up, at least in the first year. I think it was in the neighborhood of $16 million to get back onto a program that we could get into a cycle. So the money that we're spending is going to go to our worst areas, and it doesn't put us in the best situation, but it puts us in a much better situation than we have been over the past couple. And we're taking advantage of the gas tax and reassigning it to some of this, and that gas tax is going to stay in place for the next number of years. So it's like anything else, you can have all the money in one year, but quite frankly, I'm not sure we could spend it all. All right, so we want to kind of do it on a control program to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck, just what you'd like to see.
Okay, so you're satisfied with the rate of work on the road that's still proposed?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. I also have Councilor Thompson, and then Councilor Aiononi, please.
Could you tell me about the weeping tile disconnect program? How much is in more than that, and what you intend to do to try to stimulate that kind of control for the sewer?
Weeping tile disconnection program was going to target the Lexington Court, Calerode Pump Station drainage area, and we're still waiting for the appeal of that EA to be removed so that we can actually advance a bylaw and bring forward the program. So we're still working on some of the details. It may be a mandatory bylaw that has as of a certain date, all homes must comply. We may have a subsidy program that would allow them to bring themselves into compliance over the first couple of years. Still a number of options that need to be hammered out, and so we really haven't put that package together. But it's going to take a considerable amount of time, not only for the enforcement part of it, but also an education and awareness program that has to come at the front end.
So is this citywide or just in the Lexington program?
The bylaw will have to apply across the city, which means we'll have to get into every home to do an inspection. The question is, will it be done over a one-year or a five-year program? And it's likely to be over...
I think education and a subsidy program, if we can ever afford that, would certainly the people taking the rainwater leaders out of the weeping tile would cut down the cost of our sewage and treatment costs. That could help. The other thing is, we want to save some money, and we've been driving down here today, and Mr. Rucudio at the review had a little survey about the leaf collection. Obviously, the leaves went off the trees late, the snow came quick, and if you drive around, they're all in the gutters, and they're going to be there until the spring. Bagging leaves is, regardless of the weather, you can pick them up and throw them and get rid of them. $200,000, and we haven't even touched the surface with respect to leaf pickup, and it doesn't look like we're going to be able to do that. Is there a report coming in on that to determine if that's an opportunity for some savings? And what do they do to our catch basins and the adverse effect of these? Not only that, blowing on somebody else's property who doesn't have leaves, there's all kinds of problems with that. The bags, you know, and the seniors, we try to help them, but if they have to have somebody put them out on the roadside, they could have somebody put them in bags just as well, and we could do something with our leaf problem. $200,000 is a lot of money. Are we having a report back on that?
It seems to me that this issue was raised at the research level review before, and I'm sorry, I don't know what the results are. Obviously, the program's...
Just comment that, yeah, the actual cost is more, I can't remember exactly, in the 80 to 100 range for that program, and we don't have plans where we're going to come back to talk about it, to be honest, because staff has suggested a few times that it would be an option to reduce our budget, because many communities don't do this, but council directed us to leave it, and so unless we're directed otherwise, we don't plan on recommending that we eliminate it at this point.
Okay. Councilor Aiononi, that was just speaking.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to echo Councilor Wing, there's two amounts in this items removal from the budget that I have a problem with, and that's fire services, and we'll deal with that when the chief gets up there. But it's also this $500,000. So here you make the comment that, I guess I would ask, should we be cutting if we're already playing catch-up? And there's very few campaign promises or election promises. I did make one, but I did hear and make a commitment to the residents that we would spend as much as we possibly could in regards to sewers. And I think taking out, and I know that's our decision, not yours, and you can always make do with more money, but I think that removing a half a million dollars into a problem that we were starting to make headway in, and rather than be behind the eight ball, is not a direction we want to be going. I think that takes us backwards. So maybe through you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. McDonald, if we want to put that money back in the budget, that's one of the things that were highlighted to us, that the residents want to see fixed, would that have to be at this meeting?
It wouldn't have to be at this meeting, but we would appreciate if council identifies items that they really want to see in. It would be helpful to us as we look at the budget between now and the next meeting. I would just clarify on that point, and while the first go-around on the budget, we had that $500,000 in, as Mr. Holman pointed out, you know, council directions to keep the number down as much as we can. That particular account still has, as Jeff said, we've got $165,000, $175,000 more than we had last year in that account. So we just want it to go higher, so we're still moving ahead, we're just not going very fast.
Well, okay, so the one year that the council, the day, and I don't think it was this council, put the $1.5 million additional into sewers, we got nothing but accolades from the residents, and it's about time that you started investing more into that. And I don't think cutting half a million dollars is exactly the direction the residents want to see us go. That's just my opinion, and I guess they'll be able to counsel, but I think that's taking us backwards. If we're going to make headway, everything costs money.
It would be really helpful, Mr. Chair, if the council feels the same way before we end this meeting.
Okay.
There'd be motions to direct us to at least relook at it, because while this might be an add-on, you may be recommending to us to take some out before we're finished here.
Well, I'd like to go through the rest of the budgets and see what they're going through, but I can anticipate that'll be a motion at the end of this.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Holman at this point?
Uh, please, please.
Sure. Councilor Carrillo?
Back that one screen, Mr. Holman. Your budget this year, that one screen was...
On that one screen, Mr. Holman, your budget this year, that one screen was an increase over last year of how much?
5.8 percent.
1.6 million total.
What was the total number?
28.0...
Spanish there? There it is. And last year was?
27.
About the previous two years? Do you recall? I think, I'd just like to see the pattern of the last couple of years. You know, okay, so we're going up 5.8 this year. Wouldn't we go up last year? Would we go up the last three years? It would be helpful to see how much more money we've kicked in, if we're going to make changes, if we're going to throw more money back in. Or I'd like to see three years spent in for our final year. So, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions, Mr. Holman? Councilor Mays.
I don't have a question for Mr. Holman, but perhaps these things on the screen, I wish I'd had those prior to the meeting, but it's been approved before the meeting. I wouldn't be getting handouts of those after the meeting.
Mr. McDonald, is this informed?
We don't have handouts for tonight, but we will send them to you first thing tomorrow.
Yeah, because I want to have a look at those, and thank you.
Okay, Councilor Wing?
Thanks. I just wanted to pick up on Councilor Thompson's comments on the loose leaf pickup. I know I was very happy to reverse our decision a few years ago after seniors called and said, "We need this service." But since then, the seniors I've talked to about it have all said, "This is actually making more work for me." I've raked and bagged all my leaves. My neighbor next door, who's younger and able-bodied, puts his to the curb. Wind comes along, blows all my property. I've got a deal with his leaves now as well as my own. And after the article ran in the paper, I did hear from people on this, and every single one of them was in favor of saving the money by cutting the service. So there was multiple reasons, you know, the gain this year, the snow came down, we've got frozen leaves stuck at the side of the road, creating traffic hazards. And I'm tired of talking to older women who are dealing with their neighbors' leaves after they've already dealt with their own. You know, and I happily support this if it helps seniors, but I think in far too many cases, it doesn't. So if we want to look at cutting the service, I can certainly support it now that there's been a change in public feeling on this.
Okay. Are there any other comments for Mr. Holman at this point? If not, I think we're going to hear from Mr. Jen from Transportation Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council, staff. I'd like to start off with a bit of a sales pitch first. Traffic and parking have always been under municipal work, and so I just, as a result of the reorganization, a division was created, Transportation Services. And you can see on the screen, those are the areas that are covered off by Transportation Services. Within your binder, although it's not sort of separated in this year's budget, tabs nine to 38 are really the ones that deal with Transportation Services. If I can step you through, basically, when we look at the total budget, it's an 11 million, 11.5 million dollar budget with $100,000 variance from over last year, really a less than 1% change. And what I'll do is walk you through and point out why. Now, the first one, parking control, approximately $715,000, that's a gross number. The variance was very minor, and I'll get into why that changed. But again, that's a, just if you can keep that on your mind, that's a gross number, and we'll get into net in a minute. I know we're just supposed to stay at gross, but you really need to understand the budget for me to explain it a little bit better. Parking operations is, again, 857,000 with a $70,000 change from last year. And this includes the parking lots as well. This is a parking fund-related budget. It gets money from revenue, and I'll top it with that a little bit. That had the biggest increase. Traffic control includes science signals in railways as well as the operations. Again, very minor, 1.8 million, and only a $13,000 adjustment. Transportation planning, 335,000 and a $52,000 change. And transit operations, that's really a good news story, and I'll get into that. Parking control, it really reflects a minor adjustment, and it was really due to wages. And what I said when we get into net, what you'll see in your budget there is this budget that's being presented to you reflects an increase in parking fines to offset the budget shortfall. So in essence, we're talking a change of about $123,000. And this is no different than other municipalities have done recently. Though I can think of one, they changed their fines to meet the shortfall in the parking operation. And this is parking control. Parking operations, again, that's really wages. The parking operations is truly a user-pay type of operation. Because the last time we did an adjustment there was 2001, we're really not keeping up with inflation. So our on-street rates haven't been adjusted since 2001, status quo. But what's happening is we contribute less to the parking fund, and the parking fund allows us to rebuild parking lots as we did in the downtown. We spent $250,000 there, it allows us to buy new equipment. Again, not tax-supported, so we're really just the flags going up, and we need to address that. Although this budget doesn't reflect an increase in any rates at this point, I'm just saying that that's what we're going to be looking at. Traffic control, really status quo, very minor, just really staffing issues. Transportation planning, we're going to begin a transportation master plan, and as a result, we're going to be doing traffic counts and to assist in developing numbers for the transportation master plan. This is a major update, it's going to take two years. So we're starting it this year. And then the last area in there is neighborhood traffic reviews. Areas such as, just recently, I received a call from Councilor Fisher with regards to Nassau and the fact that there's cut-through traffic. So we need to deal with those types of issues. Lamont, again, outstanding issue that we're going to try and deal with under this. So the transportation end of it really deals with that type of issue. And the last one is transit operations, really, at this point, a very good news story because of the fact that the decrease was attributable to the amalgamation that the city recently dissolved the transit commission, made it part of the city, and we're able to take advantage of some lower costs with to do with benefits and so forth. And it's really caused us, you'll see the net number in there, a reduction of about $182,000 for this year. And again, that's partially due to some of the other things we're doing, like signing contracts with Niagara Falls for U-Passes, and that's a money-making venture. So for this year, transit is really a good news story, but it's the calm before the storm. 2009 will be different, but for this year, we're saving money in transit. And then finally, our priorities for 2008. Again, transportation master plan, a major update. This will involve the MTO, Niagara Falls Commission in the region, and then transportation modeling, which really feeds into the transportation master plan. This is our second year of creating this. This allows us to identify congested areas and deal with transportation or traffic congestion throughout the city. An important key one is the Strategic Transit Business Plan and Ridership Growth Strategy. That's being undertaken this year, and that'll identify how we need to grow within transit, how we need to look at improving our ridership, improving our headways. Rather than someone standing there waiting for the bus for an hour, we're looking at trying to improve on that. One thing that's coming onboard is AODA standards, which is really Ontario Disabilities Act standards, that is going to force us into doing certain things. One of the things, just an example, is calling out stops that we're going to be forced to. Similar when you're on the road train and you hear them announcing the next stop, we're going to be forced to be, things like that. Again, focuses around improving traffic and safety around the city. And we're going to be, for the first time, bringing out our 2007 collision report, which reviews our search report system and sees how it functions related to accident hazards and so forth. And we'll also be completing the downtown parking plan, and we're going to be doing that for '08. New thing, I don't know if you can see it on the board there in front of you, you see the speed sign with the radar board above it. We're looking at implementing something in front of St. Vincent de Paul to improve on safety, and that's included in this year's plan. And as I indicated, we're going to be updating parking fees, parking pay rates, completing the service delivery review of bylaw enforcement, which includes parking control. And then, again, taking the last step for transit, reviewing the caravan operations to see whether it should continue to be aboard or not.
Do you have any questions of Mr. Jen at all? Councilor Doherty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Carl. It's good to see some good news in one of the reports. That's great. Couple of questions for you, I didn't hear mentioned, I'm sure you are addressing it. Well, one is coordination of intersections, you know, both within the city and between regional roads in the city, so we're not constantly stopping and going. Is there new technology? And I know we've got a lot of old infrastructure in place, but are we gearing at some point to go towards something that's a little more user-friendly? That was my first question in regard to coordinating intersections. And the second one through you, Mr. Chair, is any green initiatives? Biodiesel, hybrid engines, things like that? I see, I know Toronto is looking to be the most green community in North America. And I just wondered, are we looking at going in that direction in any way as well? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Doherty. And in response to your first one, with respect to the signals, we started last year a 12-year program of replacing all of our signals and upgrading them. That's sort of the first step. With regards to coordination, the region looks after all the signals within the entire region, including ours, and we're working with them to try and look at some of these areas of some progression and bettering the flows. Also, our transportation master plan will be reviewing that aspect and come up with some scenarios that we can look at and some improvements that we can consider ourselves if the region is going to take too long. So we'll be looking at that. In regards to biodiesel, our strategic business plan, actually, we're receiving from the FMC. We applied for a grant. We're going to find out in the new year whether we have received that grant of $100,000. And of course, that'll look at, that's from the Green Fund. And part of our strategic business plan is to look at those types of operations, biofuels, hybrid vehicles, and so forth. So we'll be taking a very close look at that.
Any other questions of Mr. Jen? Seeing none, thanks for your presentation. I would now ask our fire chief, Lee Smith, to come up and give us a report on fire services.
Mr. Chairman and the members of council, I'd like to present to you the proposed fire budget for this year. Niagara Falls is a composite department, as many of you know. We have full-time and volunteer firefighters within the city, three full-time stations and three volunteer stations, approximately 230 personnel, full-time and volunteer. We also have a fire administration building and numerous large response vehicles and small fleet. So suppression, fire suppression is responsible for many of the things that you're very familiar with, including responding to fires, medical calls, auto extracations, hazardous materials events, water rescues, specialized technical rescues. Training is very important in that whole aspect. We have a lot of legislative mandates for it, and so we're constantly trying to attain a very high level of training for all those things. They're very dangerous activities and need a high level of training. Our communications division is located at Station 1 on Morrison Street, and we have our own computer-aided dispatch system, which takes 911 calls that are routed from St. Catherine's, and we dispatch fire apparatus throughout the city. And we also have the capability of interoperability within the municipal surrounding area so that we can travel into Thurland, Welland, and Fort Colvin and Fort Erie to help them with calls when they require it. And a fire prevention office, you may be familiar with, and because they come into most of your buildings that you're working in, in order to do inspections, make sure that we're dealing with complaints that we receive, and also to ensure that we're doing public education within the community. And the other thing that we have that many of you may not know of, but more recently, some of senior staff have been involved in, is emergency management. So the fire chief has been designated as a community emergency management coordinator, and as such, I'm responsible for managing the emergency management program within our city. And that has been delegated to the fire chief for a number of years now. But there are emergency management Ontario requirements that make sure that we're doing just that and that there are certain benchmarks we have to meet. And for Niagara Falls, it's considered the essential level of the emergency management program. We're submitting this year, and we'll be meeting that mandate later this year or early into 2008. So the differences and the increases from 2007 are highlighted on the screen, primarily in fire suppression end, on our facilities and in administration. We have increases that are above 3%. So if we go to the next slide, we'll highlight those. And suppression is caused by our labor and our benefits for $253,086 respectively. And it's basically because firefighters are moving through the ranks, going from fourth class to third and up to first class, as well as we've hired five new firefighters through a process in 2007 to complete our five-year plan to increase our staffing numbers from back in 2001 when we began it, from 17 to 22 on-duty staffing. And last year also, the firefighters who were hired, were hired within the last four months of the year, and so the wages that they had were prorated, and now they're receiving full wages throughout the year. We also have long-term debt principal and interest that was created due to lifecycle replacement of fleet vehicles. We've had some significant purchases that we're currently underway with and that have been on order. So this year, once we receive those, we'll be pretty well upgraded with most of our large fleet needs for the year. But the debt servicing is considerable and adds to our operating budget. We also have internal rent on our vehicles that is a direct reflection of the costs that are incurred for maintenance on and some of the aging vehicles that we're replacing, as a matter of fact, and also additional fuel costs, as was earlier described. In our facilities, we have long-term debt principal interest for Station 6. It was a two-year funded program in 2006 and 2007. So in 2007, we ended up having to incur the additional costs that will be reflected in our operating. In the administration area, we've increased our contribution to capital by $50,000 from $150,000 a year to $200,000 a year to reflect some of the responsibilities that we have within our capital budget. And it was at $150,000 for many, many years, and we really needed to increase it in order to cover off some of the capital costs that we are looking to be incorporating. So that really outlines the increases that we were facing. Our priorities for 2008 includes a communication systems review. Over the past number of years, our communication system has provided us with many inconsistencies. We've been trying to deal with it, and so we're bringing a consultant in to actually take a detailed look at it and make some recommendations to us for improvements. Our emergency management mandates will continue into 2008, and we've got a good start on them. We've just completed an emergency management exercise this month, and we will continue with one or two more in the spring into the summer of next year. New level of service is what we were talking about with our staffing. We've completed our hiring process, and as of January 1st, we're moving from our current staffing numbers, our on-duty staffing numbers of 20 to 22, and that completes that program. So starting on January 1st, we will have up-staffed all of our vehicles to four-man crews and will be at the level of service that we were trying to achieve. Training is very critical, as I described, for both in the suppression division to make sure that we're meeting our certification requirements. We use on-duty staff, send them away to get them trained, bring them back as trainers, and then they deliver the training to our staff. And we felt that was the most effective way to be able to deal with training, rather than be bringing in outside sources and having them give us some training and then leave with all their experience. So we want to develop our internal staff to do that. Enforcement within our fire prevention division, we're working hard. We've had some staff turnover. We've had significant staff turnover in the department this year. But in our fire prevention division, we're really working on bringing everyone up to a higher level of understanding of the enforcement needs. There's a new provincial mandate for zero toll... There's a new provincial mandate for zero tolerance within the province on certain things, life safety matters within fire safety issues. So we're working hard at doing that as well. And the one thing that we've been working on, and we're going to continue working on, is our revision of our operating guidelines. They're very important to us, and we, our current operating guidelines are outdated, and we're working hard with the committee and with our administration staff in order to make sure that we're in compliance with all the guidelines that we need to have in place. And they're based on Section 21 guidelines from the Ministry of Labor, and we're also looking at the Fire Marshal's Office Public Fire Safety Guidelines to guide us. So with that, that completes our priority outlook for the year 2008.
I believe we do have some questions, and I'll ask Counselor Iannone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If the clerk can put us back to his first fire screen. Thank you, Chief, and I appreciate the presentation you gave us. You spoke about trying to enhance training priorities, and that was one of my concerns at the beginning of this. If I'm reading that correctly, you're reducing training by 6.2%, or almost $17,000. Is that correct?
Not quite. We, within the training division, there are two full-time personnel.
Okay.
And what happened was one of our director retired, and so we were short, we were down to one person in training for a significant period of the year, and so that reflects the lack of wages to that position because it wasn't there. Right now, we're just filling that position.
Okay. I often have concerns when we pass high-rise buildings here, that we're passing 58-story hotels and 68-story hotels that were not increasing fire service training at the time. And I've had a lot of your guys say to me, you know what, you guys continue to pass those hotels, but then you have to pass increased training in high-rise fire suppression. Am I off-base here? Do we, because when I see $200,000 removed from your budget, my first concern is, A, we weren't putting enough into training before, so we need to look at that, and should we be pulling $200,000 out? So where did that $200,000 come from? And would you like to see more money from training? Because I think the more that Hilton goes up, and the more we have the rainbow towers going up, we should be adequately training our firefighters to serve in high-rise suppression.
Well, first of all, there's the two different areas that we're looking at, our overtime budget and our training division budget, our training section budget. The training section budget is specifically for some of the courses that we have, but also for the wages for the two training officers that are in that division. So that's not really a representative example of either taking, of taking training dollars and putting them, applying them to training or not. It's filling that position, and again, we will have full complement beginning, at the beginning of the year. It's just a matter of getting the person in a position, through the training process and through that hiring process.
Okay, in regards to...
So as far as, sorry, so as far as that area is concerned, that's not be referring to, you're referring to the overtime budget. And the overtime budget is used to, as far as bringing people back in to provide that additional training. So we have a myriad of different specialties within the fire service, and so we've hired, or we've trained people to a higher level to be able to be instructors and deliver that training in-house. So they can deliver it on their own shift, but when they come back to deliver it to another shift, if there's only one instructor to do that, then we have to pay them overtime to come back in and do it. Instead of hiring an outside instructor to do it, we do it with our in-house people. So that's where that overtime money, much of the overtime money is going.
Well, it makes sense to keep it in-house, rather than pay, it costs far more to bring a consultant in than it has to have your people train in-house. But for the concern that the guys have expressed in regards to the high-rises, and I mean, 58-stories, that's a challenge in itself, and it's going up as we speak, do they need additional training for that, and will it cost additional overtime dollars?
By any time you want additional training, it's going to cost you in some way, shape, or form, whether it's additional overtime dollars, or materials, or courses, or whatever you want to do. We believe we're working hard at trying to achieve all the necessary training for the department, and we're trying to be fiscally responsible when we do it as well, knowing that, you know, it's a big cost to be putting towards a municipal service. But we want more money in order to be able to do the job. Everybody does, but, you know, we're just trying to fit in with the municipal mandates and being responsible with how we're having the resources applied.
Well, and I like that answer, because I'd like to see us give you more dollars for training. In my mind, I am responsible for the firefighters that we employ, and if we know they need additional training to do firefighting in a 58-story building, you're, I mean, we don't play a crisis, they just happen, and they have to be adequately trained before they go up there. I like the fact your emergency measures service, we had a chance to talk about this. I just spent three days at a crisis management conference, and I'd like to see the city have an overall crisis management plan that we post on our website, so that the residents know, in case something happens, these are the directions to follow. I think every municipality should have that, and I know it's a lot of work. I spent three days with municipalities from across the province, and it's a ton of work to put together, but it may help save in the pandemonium. To me, that's just prevention.
Emergency plan for the city is just being formatted. Right now, we have it in electronic format, so as soon as we have it formatted, we'll be sending it down to information systems to be posted.
And will we be highlighted in that? I'd like to see you come in and give counsel, a highlight in your crisis management plan, so that we understand it too, because we're going to play a role in that also.
You can absolutely set that up.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of Chief Smith?
Just one thing to follow up on, Counselor Iannone. Chief, are there things in high-rise buildings that are not in other buildings that help firefighters? Isn't the code sector high-rise buildings? So that I don't want anybody to get the impression because it's a high-rise building, our people aren't trained, and it's so much tougher. I mean, the amount of money that the high-rise people are putting into their buildings to help our firefighters is an enormous amount of money as well.
The larger the building, generally, the more you have to put into it to make the building safer. There's a greater degree of fire separations between floors and between elevator shafts and floors. There's smoke control measures that are required to be put into the access stairwells, as well as sprinkling the entire building, and different things like that that give us enhancements to the building to allow us to operate in a safer fashion. Most of the concern that we have is the height of the building, because the floor area is really not much different on the first floor than it is on the 58th floor, but it's at a higher, a greater level above the ground, and it's harder to get there. If the elevators aren't working, though, the firefighters' elevators, it's very labor-intensive in order to fight that fire, and it causes delays, which means you need more people because the fire's larger, and so those are the concerns that we have. It's a manpower issue, but you need significant manpower in order to be able to deal with a high-rise fire.
Are there any other questions of Chief Smith? If not, thank you for your presentation. I would now ask Ms. Morrissey, Director of Parks Recreation and Culture, to come forward.
Chairman Peter Angel and members of council, walk you through the Parks Recreation and Culture budget. As you can see, our total gross operating budget is approximately $12.6 million, which in 2008 represents a variance from 2007 of about 6.1%, or $714,000. The major divisions of Parks Recreation and Culture are highlighted, those being cemetery operation. I'll certainly explain as we get to the next page why, while certain trigger points are there for the gross. Parks operations, our recreation programs, which is the things that we do in the arenas, as well as the community center, our facilities, or the operations of the arenas themselves, and other cultural services sweeps up another of areas, including our landscape design and our administration staff that work in the McFane Center. The key issue is, I guess, identifying why these variances are there. With cemetery operations, it's specific actually to a one-time adjustment in 2007. We had projected a revitalization of the site at Lundy's Lane that was adjacent to the old recreation building, so both the expenses for that expansion, which were being paid for for the cemetery and the applicable revenues of approximately change, $314,000 to $168,000, were accrued in there. So we didn't spend either the cost nor did we accrue the revenues. The other small adjustment is simply an internal reallocation of where we're spending our staff. We do have a shared manager between parks and cemeteries, and we also changed where our staff are working between maintenance and burials and that line item. In our parks operations, there's a twofold inclusion in here. The smaller amount is enhanced playground service levels that we're recommending, and this is specific to sand in our community, and as well, it's the equipment associated with that. So there's two seasonal employees that are included in that. The other large adjustment of approximately $210,000. We had an internal reorganization, and currently, we'll be rejigging it for next year. There are approximately an increase of $210,000 is specific to trees and urban forestry section, which is a component of municipal works. However, that was, again, a reorganization or reallocation of staff people in there, and if there's any more specific questions, both myself and Jeff are able to address those later. In recreation facilities, this is specific to an adjustment taking us back to 2005 levels or prior in our capital holding contribution. This is critical to us. We increased our capital holding to $394,000 from $115,000. This avoids the need to constantly borrow money for our capital projects, so it's been built into the operating budget to allow that to go forward. Within our other cultural services, this is predicated on one main thing. Prior to this year, myself and another member of our staff were held in an administrative account for the preparation of the city of Niagara Falls, and with a more cost-centered-based accounting, our two positions have been attributed to Parks Recreation and Culture, and we also have, like other divisions, people moving through salary grid, and we have a number of people in both our landscape design section and in our recreation coordinators' positions that are moving through. That is the smaller amount, about $42,000 and change. Our priorities for 2008, many of them are capital-driven, but again, we're sort of integrated with that throughout the year. One of our biggest priorities is not only building the four-pack arena, but ensuring that our operating plan that we outlined in the May budget that we presented to you is put in place for opening in 2009. We're going to continue working towards the street recommendations in our strat plan. There's many recommendations in there, both operational as well as capital-related, so we're going to be dealing with those. Many of them are policy-related and improving the services that we offer in this community. One of the things, again, emanating out of the strategic plan, but is a real focus for us right now, is updating our Trails and Bike Way master plan in partnership with our Trails and Bike Way Committee. We need to find out how best and most efficiently and most economic way to get connectivity in this community. We want to address some of the challenges that we're facing with the Millennium Trail, particularly with third-party ownership, and how best to resurrect connectivity throughout 2008. We're really focused, again, through the strategic plan, on partnerships and alliances. I think that's fundamental to everything we do, but very fundamental to Parks Recreation and Culture. Implementation of key projects, again, many of them capital, are going to be something we are really involved in in '08. This includes working towards the new partnership and a new facility for the Boys and Girls Club of Niagara. It includes fundraising initiatives through the Recreation Committee and the subcommittee of that team, which is very involvement, has a strong involvement for staff as we move forward. There's another park redevelopment project that we'll be having an information meeting in June, or Dune, sorry, in January with the Lions Park, and obviously, working in conjunction with Girls, now called Niagara United Soccer Club, as we move forward with that project, hopefully in the next six to eight months. Additionally, community greening has been a huge endeavor for us, not only through Park and the City, but through our commitment, as recommended this year from the committee, that we participate in communities in bloom. A civic pride, essence of community, and we just went through Winter Lights last night, and we knew how proud our community was of that win from last year and moving forward to the winter circle, so we continue to focus on community pride and stewardship through that. Another important area for us is park planning and data management. This is looking at best practices we plan parks, and as we expand, helps us to develop our parks in our community. We need to retool and rethink, particularly as we apply SEPTED, crime prevention through environmental design, in everything we do, to ensure that as we develop in our community smaller neighborhood parks or more regional community parks, that they're in keeping with the needs of our evolving community and our evolving residents. And this is really particular to accessibility, the needs of an aging population, and also the needs of our young residents as well, and family-driven activity. Last area, and this will dovetail with what we believe is the financial policies that were set forth, is that we're going to continue to focus through our budget and through comparative review with other municipalities on revenue enhancement. This is specific not to one area, but includes everything that we believe we have opportunity to enhance and reduce the task care-based support of what we do as PRC, where it can be achieved. This would include our pools and our aquatic programming, our arena specifically, outside of even what we're doing with the four-pack, with our senior centers, and with our playing trails. This also would be achieved through a very comprehensive rate with these assessment, which we intend to review in 2008. So that in summary, is the highlight of the Parks Recreation and Culture operating budget, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Counselor Iannone, and then the mayor.
Thank you. And as you mentioned, the Millennium Trail, we passed Morrison Street to the Parkway, I think, three years ago. When are we doing it?
It's not that when we're doing it. The challenge that we've had with that particular section is that, first of all, this past summer, we dealt with the issue of the bridge, the two bridges that were owned by CN, and whether or not their stability would need to be addressed. And in the end, it was decided that they wouldn't be removed because of the heavy asphalt tank. The second challenge that we have is because of the third-party relationship, and we have many of them on segments of this trail, it's been a very difficult and time-consuming approach to coordinate all of this. It's also becoming much more expensive to increase the trail linkages using hydrolands. So that's why, while we're thinking Phase 3 right now, we should go forward with, in consultation with the Trails and Bike Way Committee, whether it's the most viable and most economic solution to connectivity to do that next link for Morrison, is something we'd like to bring that through to consideration. There may be better ways in addition to that, or in replacement for that. The other thing we just went through too with Hydro was the placement of the trail, and they wanted us at one point to consider going up closer to the fence line, and with the comprehensive discussion, the committee really stressed to Hydro, and they agreed that we need to stay away from the abutting fence line of property owners on even that section. So I appreciate that it's a bit frustrating in terms of the time. We're trying our best to mitigate the challenges, but our strategic plan did stress connectivity, and right now, we're not meeting that goal of connectivity on the hydro quarters.
Okay, let's talk about connectivity, because that's been a council vote more than half a dozen times. And if you're coming back to ask us to reconnect the phases that we've already said a number of times we're not going to reconnect, then we're going to have the same set of residents out here saying, why are you making us revisit this again? But I'll say this, same thing I said downstairs, council passed a motion to do from Morrison to the Parkway. So you're now saying the Trails and Bike Ways Committee is going to come back and ask us to reconsider doing that?
What they're, they're not going to, we're not going to bring back to ever asking you to reconsider the areas when you told us that, that that was not supportive. But we wanted to find a way, and the master plan also commented on, right now, you're not going to get a lot of connectivity with just the two phases, the Millennium Trail, that are going forward, and because we're meeting some challenges with respect to landowner relationships on the one phase, we'll still keep that in mind, and we'll still bring that forward. But if we can have a better plan in terms of connectivity and getting us through downtown as well with that master plan, we thought we packaged it a little bit more strategically to get to. We'll certainly continue with the phases that you've approved, but we'll let you know what we're facing with respect to our relationship with Hydro, CN, and the region as we move forward.
For the residents who were pro-trail, whether they approved or disapproved of the direction that council went, we went in a direction. So I'm forever being asked, did you not approve that Millennium Trail? So for anybody watching here who is asking us, are you doing Phase Morrison Street to the Parkway? Yes or no? Is that still on the books?
It's still on the books.
And are we looking 2008, 2009, 2020? Like, when can we tell the residents they can use that?
Well, we haven't even finished the phase that you first approved in '06, and a lot of that was due to the bridges. So we're hoping that phase is up and running in '08, and that we would see the next phase started in '08 or '09.
So we can anticipate the residents won't be able to use that portion of the trail till at least '09?
No, this phase, the phase that we're working on right now, Section 3, is hopefully '08. Yes, '09. Again, I can bring back a more detailed report for you, and even have Hydro come and address some of the challenges that we're facing with the particular landowner relationships along those trails. It's just been a lot more comprehensive and discussion-based than we would have anticipated probably in '05 and '06 when this was originally brought forward.
Okay, well, then, if we're talking we passed it in '06, so we're looking at now '08, we're not even going to be finished. I think we do need an update, because for those that really wanted the connecting channel and didn't get it, they somewhat settled for the Morrison Street to the Parkway, and they're forever asking, where is it? So if those concerns were there, I would have liked to see them highlighted before tonight. It worries me a little to look at '09 as being the end date. I mean, they must be sitting at home shaking their head right now, saying, you passed it in '06, and you're looking at '09 now? So maybe to staff, we could have somebody come back and give us, you know, an update report, because there's people sitting at home wondering why we haven't done it.
Okay, Mayor Sossi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Please, that we're going to be entering the Communities in Bloom competition for '09. Recently, we completed a seminar on Saturday, we had a presentation by Communities in Bloom officials, and I think that the challenge Parks and City Committee has accepted is going to be very cost-efficient and realistic. So perhaps the green initiatives, we need to elaborate on that for us a bit to help the committee when we have council in terms of dashing cash over there.
The actual Communities in Bloom budget is not, the committee budget is not in the Parks and Recreation, it's in your binder at the front for the committees. We've actually included a... We've actually included in that budget approximately an additional $20,000. We've also projected that we try to offset that increase with approximately $12,000 to $15,000 in sponsorship and fundraising. But it's critical for us to be able to achieve that kind of outreach in the community that we have the monies in order to do the campaign and some of the project implementation that we'll be doing. Additionally, in your operating budget, under Tab 25, there's $154,500 in various screening initiatives. I have the list with me, if you'd like a detail of that. We have it in draft, which we have to discuss with the committee. But we have included, for example, some forest infrastructure for Gethsemane Road Park, again, Communities in Bloom, approximately $45,000 in tree planting in total. We have about $15,000 for George Picater Park for ATV mitigation with some boulder placements. And there's a number of signage, again, most of this is emanating out of the master plan done five years ago, four years ago now, for Park and the City. But if you'd like the full list, more than happy to get you the draft that we put together, itemizing in 1548.
Chair, Counselor Diodati, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two quick updates. Good. Any talk or discussion on lease-free dog park status, and that was one, and two, Lundys Lane Cemetery, the Recreation Commission Building, just wondering what the status was down there?
The first one, yeah, that was a very strong recommendation coming out of the strategic plan. We have had really preliminary discussions at one point with the gentleman with Fireman's Park, it hasn't really moved forward. We haven't identified it just yet. There are some cost implications if it was fenced, but we'd like to do some more comparative. We do need a passive park, but we'll certainly review it under our policy section this year in terms of looking at opportunity for that, because we know it's a really strong area of growth. It's also an area where you have to balance as well, neighborhood use, park use, abutting community, so we'll, something the Recreation Committee can help us with. With respect to the end use of the Recreation Building, staff continues to meet with Mr. Pangu, and there's actually another meeting scheduled for Wednesday, which will involve not only staff, but members of the Municipal Heritage Committee and members of the Lundys Lane DIA, and we've been meeting to gather as much information so that that report to staff can be forthcoming, from staff's side. So we hope to be back in February with the report to you.
Okay. Are there any other questions with Ms. Morsy at this time? If not, thank you. Does any council member have any comments in regards to the 2008 budget or the presentation Counselor Diodati.
There's just one thing, Mr. Chair, that was brought to our attention by Regional Councilor Puttuck, and I just wanted to publicly say something, that I agreed with his comments in terms of development charges, and I just wanted to kind of throw that out on the table. I don't think the average resident realizes that they, part of their taxes is to subsidize new developments, new subdivisions in the city, and there are a lot of communities that 100% of the development covers the new area. And I would just hope that staff are, when they're coming up, I know Mr. Dren made mention of it, but I would hope that they would take a good look at, rather than just indexing our development charges, that we look at recouping and making it self-sustainable. And I see some comment, staff look like they want to say something, but anyway, I just wanted to touch on the, besides the budget itself, obviously, I think we're very close, there's a little bit of tweaking, but I think we're close, but the development charging, I'm thinking as far as another source of income, I think it's something that, it's an unfair thing, I think, in the one sense that the residents have to offset the development costs, and secondly, it's a new sense of, a new source of revenue potentially for the city.
Quick comment, I mean, we actually redo the development charges about every five years, and only at that time do we really do a projection on the cost, and we do exactly that, we anticipate all potential costs going to that development charge, but you can't do it every year, really, it's just the inflationary factor during that five-year period. So we will, I think it's '09, or in '08 it's finished, and we'll have a new one for '09.
If I could, just so I understand, so you get up to speed, and then for the next five years, you fall behind, is that kind of how it works?
No, just the opposite, that's why we have the inflationary factor built in, to keep us year to year, but then we'll, looking ahead, we'll do this in '08, it becomes effective in '09, and what we're doing is projecting then what development costs will be, and that's how we determine the rate. And we can only determine, provide a rate that is really reflective of what these projections are.
Counselor Thompson.
Just clarification, one of the comments, if the residents subsidize development charges, that doesn't happen. Do you have a comment, please?
Mayor Sossi. That's correct, Mr. Chair. Also, I just wanted to advise council that recently at the region, we discussed the updating of regional development charges. We noticed that the average for a single-family development in Niagara was running about about $13,000 per lot. We feel, though, that it could be increased to about $18,000 per lot, when we look at other municipalities of similar size. And I asked the region that, rather than having them take up that whole gap as a region, that they allow the municipalities to have their input, which will take place at different times. As you know, in Niagara Falls, we're looking at 2009. So what I asked is that they hopefully meet with the, any of the area treasurers or revenue officers to deal with the matter, to say, "Let's see how we can work this out between the region and municipalities," just so the region doesn't take up the greatest portion of that or all that portion, and allows municipalities to still be competitive. So we did ask, and hopefully between the CIOs or the treasurers, that they'll meet in the next several months to at least accomplish that.
Okay. Sorry, Mr. Dvilovic.
Yes, to the chair. It's not easy, it's not simply just saying, "Well, this will be the new charge." As we talked about, there was the transportation master plan that needs to be done, there's a number of background studies that staff have to undertake in 2008, and that material then is used in doing your development charges. In order to set your development charges, you have to do these background studies, and they will tell you what the works that you have to do in the future that are attributable to development. And you need that information in case you ever have a challenge on your development charges. So the region can't simply say, "Well, because the average is 18, we're going to go up to 18." They have to justify it, just as we have to justify any increases to our development charges. And with respect to what Counselor Diodati was saying, there have been some municipalities, and I know at one time, the City of Niagara Falls did that too, we said the development charges should be 5,000, but to encourage development, they said, "No, we're going to charge three in residential development." So whatever the difference was, that would have had to come from a tax base to fulfill those projects. So that may have been some of the comments that Counselor Puttuck was talking about from the region. So that, so when we come back in 2009, we'll look at that. If this council wants to say development charges could come fully from developments, and we're not going to subsidize it, then that's the rate that you'll set, but we will justify what the charges should be.
Okay, Counselor Diodati.
Just for some clarifications, I understand, one thing just to mention too, and again, I don't know if this is the case or not, Counselor Puttuck suggested that development charges do not enter a building. He said the studies, so I mean, obviously, we'll have to verify that to see if it's an incentive or disincentive, whether development charges are high or not, I don't know. But when there is a shortfall, as it may be now, who covers the difference? So if the development charges don't currently cover the cost of development, who covers that difference?
Typically, there wouldn't be a shortfall. We have reserves in development charges to cover any costs that are directly related to development. And while it's a five-year bylaw, you know, we do roll if there's money left over at the end of the five years, and typically, there would be a surplus, we roll it into the next five, so we have a cushion. But it's pretty rare that the taxpayer would pay for the specific costs related to the development.
Okay, Counselor Ayenoni.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We spoke earlier about putting a number of items removed from the draft 2008 budget back in. I'd like to thank Counselor Diodati, who asked staff to give us this, so that we could actually take a look at one page and see what was pulled. I think that when we look back to our service delivery review, highlighted time and time again, no matter how the question was asked, "What do you want us to invest in?", "Roads, sewers, water." I mean, we heard it, it didn't matter how the question was posed, so I'd like, I think that we're going backwards if we're cutting out something, and we're already behind. So I'd like to make a motion that we put back the $500,000 transfers to capital into our municipal works budget.
Okay, do I have a seconder to that motion, seconded by Counselor Wing? Any comments or questions to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Counselor Thompson, Counselor Carrion are opposed? Counselor Ayenoni?
The next one I'd like to put back in is the fire service labors and benefits. I think we should have them as highly trained as possible. I don't think we should be cutting emergency services, and I certainly don't think we should be cutting labor and benefits. And I'd like to see more money go into training, and more money go into our fire service. So I'd like to make a motion to put back the $200,000 into the fire service.
Okay, do I have a seconder to that motion, Counselor Wing? Do I have any questions or comments about the motion? Counselor Wing.
Thank you. I'm happy to second that. I noted Chief, in his presentations, that these are very dangerous activities, they need a high level of training, and of course, we also have a lot of new employees in that department, so I think it's very important to do as much training as we can.
Okay. Are there any?
Just on that point, I just don't want council to get the impression that because that money's not in there, the firefighters aren't being trained. Firefighters are being trained, significant effort in training, in fact, that's the main thing that we do with fire services, training. So this is money, as the chief mentioned, that was identified for overtime and related kind of items in that regard, and we've asked all divisions to make cuts where possible. So if this money does not go back in, we're happy to, in fact, report the 2.7 million back into the budget, because all of those items were put in because we thought they were important, and we've taken them out because of council's direction. I just don't want you to have the impression that if that money wasn't in, we'd have no money to train our firefighters, and that's not the case.
Counselor Ayenoni.
Thank you. Mr. McDonald, I've never supported cutting our fire service budget. I think we need to leave as much in there as possible, and like every director, we'll take as much money as we possibly can when we're talking about our emergency services. I think we should leave in there as much as possible. And I don't, I think his original budget had $200,000 in it, had $200,000 worth, had to be for a reason, and it was simply directed to cut budgets, that that $200,000 came out. So, I mean, I think it's an important service to the residents, and I know you're saying it will not be demanded if it comes out, but it was there for a reason.
Okay, there is a motion, Mr. Mayor Sossi.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say, I think that the fire services have done very well, and we've supported immensely, we've grown to 27 new firefighters. I think if the chief had a concern, obviously, he'd express that to this council, and I didn't hear that from him. So I'm pleased that we're making great strides, and we're doing very well with our training and our fire service, so I don't think that there's an additional requirement for additional capital to be injected, so I don't hear the chief claiming about that, so I don't think I can support that motion.
Are there any other comments in regards to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion is lost. I should just note, I should just note as well that there wasn't, I guess, full clarity on the full motion. As the CAO understands it right now, $500,000 has been added to the budget with no direction to take something else out. Effectively, if this is the case moving forward, and we stay with the budget that is presented here today, then the tax rate would move from a 4% increase to a 5% increase. Is that right, Mr. McDonald?
That's correct.
Okay. So I'm not sure if the mover and the seconder, I guess, foresaw that that's the way that it would be, or if there wants to be some clarity on how you'd like to proceed with that. Counselor Ayenoni.
Thank you, Counselor Peter Angelo, and the motion went through, and we can all add, and I think we understood if you put $500,000 back in, it would be an increase in the levy.
Is there any other direction or any comments to staff in regards to the budget? Counselor Thompson, please.
Yes, I'd like to have a report back on the leaf collection, seeing Counselor Wing spoke in favor of what I was saying, in fact, probably brought it up before, but I think we should have another look at it, there's a little bit of savings there, and I'd like to see that. And I'd like to, I see that the $20,000 has been cut out of the request for Niagara Falls tourism. I think that's a small potato, pardon me? $120. I think that's a huge mistake, and I'd like to have that reconsidered also. But I'll do the leaf thing first.
Okay, so there's a motion that's asking the report back on the leaf collection, and I have a seconder by Counselor Wing. Do I have any questions or comments to the motion? Just a report. Seeing none, all those in favor? Both motions carried?
I'd like to have a reconsideration of the tourism. We've all heard of the problems and difficulties. Niagara Falls tourism is fighting back to try to get on track, to make things happen in this community. When we look at the percentage of assessment we have in this, something like 26, 28%, or, Mr. Burden, is it 36, 37%? Tourism and commercial, and 2.6 industrial. Shows you where we've gone in the last many, many years, just like many other municipalities. And I think this is crucial, when you take a six, eight-week festival, like the Winter Festival of Lights, which I support and sit on the board, having $380,000 as a budget, and you take a year-round organization that really is the heart of the jobs and the assessment in this community, I think it's a sad situation, and I would like to suggest that the $400,000 that was requested, which is what they were getting 10, 15 years ago, to be reconsidered and implemented in the budget.
Okay, so you're making a motion that the funding go up to the requested amount?
To the $400,000.
Seconded by Counselor Ayenoni. Counselor Ayenoni, would you speak to that?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. If this was Chef Boy, and I second the motion, because if this was Chef Boy, ID, or Niagara, or any of the other plants that we bent over backwards to help keep here, we wouldn't think twice about it. The review just highlighted, this is your industry, stop whining about it, this is all you have. So I don't think we can cut that either.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Mays, did you have your hand up?
No.
So Counselor Carrion, Counselor Diodati.
Conflict noted by Counselor Carrion, Counselor Diodati.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just one other thing, you know, we talk about tourism and industry, and people are saying, "How come you support, how come you do so much for tourism?" Well, we have a budget for industry and commerce and economic development. I don't know what Mr. Filicetti's budget, what's your budget this year, Mr. Filicetti? $600,000 we spend in the industrial sector, so we're looking at 400. So this is not even equal to what we do on the other side. So I think it's fair, and I think it's the lifeblood of this community.
Very good point. Counselor Diodati.
Just for clarification, so we're saying $120,000 that was taken out, we're putting it back.
Right.
Yeah. So anyway, I just want to sort of clear on that, because I mean, I do support it, I agree to brush the teeth if you want to keep, and I mean, obviously, they're coming through some challenging times right now, and we need to make sure that they're, we're still doing our part to support them, so we're, the $120,000 back in, I just want to.
All right, thank you. Okay, are there any other comments to the motion? Counselor Mays.
Well, I thought it was clear that the last time that we were here, when they made the presentation, that it was going to be $400,000. And I thought, I was quite surprised when they saw there was back to 28, so I had no problem supporting the motion.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion's carried unanimously with the conflict noted by Counselor Carrion. Are there any other comments or direction that any council member would like to give to staff in regards to the 2008 budget? So far, we've added on $620,000, and no comments about decreasing it from any other areas. Counselor Mays.
We're not going to pass this budget tonight, are we? We're not.
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
But I think staff is looking for some type of direction from council. Counselor Carrion.
Well, I think it's important that we give our comments and give the staff a better direction, and a better of our feeling. Personally, I'm not going to support a budget that's a 5% increase, so if through the next four or five weeks, the way it went tonight, it looks like we'll be up to 20 or 30%. Because people keep pulling things out, and we keep pulling them back. So personally, I don't see why we should be any higher than the region. And I don't think at this particular stage of the game, I'd be prepared to support a budget that's higher than the regional budget, and I'd like to see how we're going to do that. So I'd like to see Mr. McDonald show us how we're going to keep our budget at the same increase as the regional increase, which I think would be an acceptable increase.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate Counsel Carrio's comments, but this year, the effects of the uploading have had a great positive impact on the region, so we're going to see a very low increase in the regional budget. And I don't know if we can even get anywhere near that. So just so the council is aware, I think we're looking at something like 1.5% at the most. So I don't know if, I'd like to achieve the same result, Counsel. I can appreciate that. So the region does have the benefit this year of the uploading, and the next couple years that they've taken advantage of because of social benefits being uploaded by the Proppings of Ontario that were announced back in August. So I don't know if we could, that's realistic enough for this council. We don't have the benefit of that additional revenue. Wish we did, but it doesn't filter down because the region, as you undertakes, the social benefits or social welfare at their budget tag.
Okay. Counselor Ayenoni?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, the staff are not Houdinis. We cannot say do more with less and expect them to pull that money out of the hat. It's not going to happen. And you know, it's interesting to watch, the federal government just told AMAL, and we were talking about this earlier, what was it the prime minister told municipalities? It was two words, and neither one of them were good. You're on your own. Basically, you are on your own. Don't come to us for money, fix your roads, your sewers, your waters by yourself. You guys, you guys have a property tax, you guys fix the roads and the sewers and the waters with your own money. He did not extend a hand by any means. So we're coming on our own here. I can't imagine, when we did our municipal review and people said, "Fix these things", those are the things we have to fix. They didn't say fix them with no money. They said fix them, and we understand we're going to pay for them. I often hear, "We want to see where our money goes." Well, if your monies are going into roads, sewers, and waters, we can show you. We can't build a community center, a four-pad ice arena that we all approved without money. So I mean, I understand that, but we all just unanimously supported pretty much $620,000 more going in. I mean, that's the reality of the day. So either we're fixing it, and we're doing the work, and there's no pot of money at the end of the rainbow. So we only got one source to go to, and the feds now said it's not them. So I don't know how you expect us to do what we plan to do in this budget without an increase. So people can't do it in their own homes.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Is there any other counsel, Counsel Mays?
I think last year, we stayed pretty much with inflation, and I wonder if this budget can't be tweaked to stay within that again, with the rate of inflation. If council, if the staff can't tweak it down to roughly what inflation would be?
Are there any other counselors that wish to make a comment? Counselor Ayenoni?
Just on Counsel Carrio's comments, maybe through you to Mr. McDonald.